Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Tuesday, October 8, 2013, Central Vermont Regional Planning. In case you don't know where you are. We see a lot of new faces in here, and welcome. We'll go around and introduce everybody, so everyone has an idea who's... Who? Start with Susan.
Sue Sinclair, Director.
Lori Emerystaff.
Sam Anderson, Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation.
Dick Payne, Cabot.
Tim Carver, Eastmont Pilier.
Dave Strong, Plainfield.
Laura Hill-Ewings, Northfield.
Fay Terry Silver, Marshfield.
Rodney Graham, Williamson, Alton.
Craig Kowfak, Warren.
Matt Knoblauch, Lawrence Staff.
Dara Torrey, Moretown.
George Mellett, Orange.
Jenna Shatney, Woodbury.
Mike Miller, Berry City.
Tina Ruth, Montpelier.
Kim McGee, staff.
Jackie Casino, staff.
Bob Warnick, Berlin.
Stephanie Smith, staff.
Rob Mueller, Calis.
Governor McCain, Waterbury.
Gary Winters, Washington.
Ron Krauth, Middlesex.
Ryan Fitzgerald, Duxbury.
Carol Chingron, Bayston.
Julie Potter, Eastmont Pilier, Alterna.
Byron Atwood, Berrytown.
Don Lahey, Waitsfield. Bill?
Bill Allen, Worcester.
And back there. Want to introduce yourselves?
They're family.
Oh, they're family, okay. All right, so we'll start off with accepting the minutes of... Yep, what?
Well, since we're missing page three unless a majority can say they've read page three, we may want to put "accepting the minutes" off on the front.
Oh.
It's not the operator, it's the copy of.
Okay, so we're unaccepting the minutes at this point?
Well, actually, I make the most accept the minutes. I've read page three.
Me too.
I second that.
I read it.
You had to read pages one, two, and four, you're out of missing three, but...
So what do you want to do? Do you want to continue?
It's up to the group.
Why second box?
Okay, any discussion on accepting the minutes? As written and missing? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Yeah, there you go. Staff reports.
Any questions on staff reports? I do have a couple of additions. Jackie, do you want to do a quick update of the zoning administrator roundtable meeting that we hosted a few weeks ago?
Sure, I think that's in...
It is, it is, but...
Actually, I'd like to begin on the main... Yeah, I believe it was on the 26th. We hosted our quarterly zoning administrators roundtable at CBRPC offices. We had a representative from Vermont Energy Investment Corp. on behalf of the Efficiency Vermont Program present on the recent Act 59, I believe, which is in regards to the residential building energy codes and municipal responsibilities and distributing information when zoning and building permits are applied for at municipal offices. And this is just to give information about the codes, and there is an actual certificate that the developers and property owners are supposed to give back to the state and/or the town. So this was really some information about the codes themselves, about the municipal responsibilities, and generally answered questions that ZAs and municipal staff had. So we had eight towns represented, and we also have more information that Efficiency Vermont left with us for the towns that weren't. And we sent out notification to those staff that we'll either bring those binders of informations next time we visit or arrange to have them picked up. Nice meeting.
Okay, thank you, Kim. And I just found out about this yesterday, but there's a meeting coming up, and I'm hoping to get six volunteers to attend a meeting up at National Life that's being hosted by the Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation. And this is for the first comprehensive statewide economic development strategy that's happening right now and expects to be completed in the summer of 2014. So this is a regional meeting to think or talk about what Vermont's economy will look like in 2015 or 2025, and how do we increase the economic well-being of all Vermonters. So again, this meeting is on Tuesday, October 22, from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m., somewhere in National Life. So any volunteers? There were hoping to get six commissioners in addition to me to attend. And I have some information. I didn't make copies for everybody, but...
If I could comment, this is the first time the state has attempted to do a statewide, it's called a SEDs, where they all get certified from by the federal government. But it will also be developing the strategic plan for the state of Vermont, is what the governor's looking for. And it's terribly important to have a good cross-section of opinion and viewpoints. So to have representatives from the Regional Planning Commission that can speak to their community's economic issues and their future going forward is very important, and I would hope that six of you could join Sue at this, because it's very important to register your viewpoint with the state, and they're going to meld this. They're holding these RDCs, which is what we're called, Regional Development Corps, are hosting these for the state throughout the state. So if you're silent, that's not great. It would be really important to come and to contribute. They have a whole format and a computerized format for input where it gets immediately posted up. I think you'd find it interesting. I know it's an evening meeting, and it's one more meeting, but this is Central Vermont's opportunity to be heard, and I think it's critical that we have a good cross-section of interests and viewpoints. So I hope that six of you could make this. And we've also asked the Chamber of Commerce, George also, to bring six people as well. So it's very important if you want to be heard or if there's an issue that's important to you that is... This is going to be the strategic plan Governor Shumlin wants to move forward with. So speak now or forever hold your peace. I would ask that you speak now. It's always so much easier to give constructive input before rather than waiting for the comment period at the end when a plan has been drafted. So if you can come, it's a worthwhile thing to attend.
What's the date and time again on that one?
October 22 from 4:30 to 7:30.
Right, we're going to hold it in the, I think, North Executive Dining Room.
You know what day of the week that is?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So Sam, is it a one-time-only meeting?
Well, this is a one-time event. Then they're compiling the comments from all the regions, starting to draft plans up, so it's now when we can register with the state what we're thinking.
4:30?
No, 4:30 to 7:30. Light refreshments will be provided, given that the state isn't giving us money and it's out of our pocket, and we don't have a pocket for refreshments. We're going to think of something to at least keep your tummies from growling until you get home.
No, I didn't make enough. I only made 10 or so copies. If anybody's interested, or I can send out an email.
And you need to let Sue know so we have names for the security. If you've never been up to National Life, they will ask for photo ID. It's no big deal, but they ask us to provide the names in advance, so they're prepared. Thank you.
Sam, I would love to attend, but I would... I'm out of town that day, that week. Otherwise, I mean, you could count me in, otherwise.
I could probably... You'd probably book me in.
That'd be great. Great, thank you.
Pass bills as far as people want to take them. I'll photocopy a few more.
Thank you.
Oh, my God.
I mean, you are the Regional Planning Commission.
And you're tasked with, you know, land use planning, so boy, now's the time to get your two cents in.
Well, I'll fill in for my vice chair.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, please let me know so I can give Sam a list of names. And I told Sam earlier, I have another meeting that night, so I'm only going to be able to stay for the first hour to an hour and a half, but I will plan to attend.
Yeah.
I can't commit at this time, but I am interested, so I will definitely let you know if I can make it.
Great, great. The state has hired a very high-powered consultant who will be coming in and running this. Sue also has a copy of the Agendai Center electronically, so she can forward that to those commissioners that can attend, and that'd be great. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? How much that consultant is getting paid, this high-power consultant?
You know, the state doesn't run their budget past me.
Yeah, okay.
But it's a SEDs, and it's a statewide SEDs. You're perfectly welcome to ask that question.
Yes. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, this was... This is funded... This is being funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development through a grant that came, I believe, post-Irene. That we were eligible for because of a federal declared emergency.
Any other definite maybes, like Fay Terry?
We have four and a half.
Four and a half.
We have five and a half.
Great. Thank you so much. I know we evening meetings are not the easiest.
So that's all I had on staff reports.
Well, they can count.
Okay, regional plan process update.
All right, I'll turn that over to Jackie and Kim. All right. We have a busy agenda this evening, so we will get through this as quickly as possible. So as you all know, the regional plan kickoff meeting was held last month, September 24. Let me get this to you. That's a good. In Montpelier, at the Vermont College of Fine Arts, we had over 70 people in attendance, including 11 commissioners. Thirteen towns were represented at that meeting, and we had over 30 public and private organizations there, so it was a pretty great showing. So Kim and I will be providing you with an overview of the 2016 regional plan or Plan Central Vermont process, as well as the day's event, just to catch people up that weren't at the meeting, because we are soliciting additional participation from folks. So thanks very much to those commissioners that were able to attend, and apologies in advance, as much of this presentation is based off of that presentation. And lastly, because we do have a full agenda, if you have questions or comments, I ask you, hang on to those, jot them down, and we'll ask for them at the end of this presentation just so we can get through it. Yes. Bear with us. Oh, I got it. Thanks. So the purpose of that day's event was just all of these bullets, to foster a sense of shared regional identity and vision, to offer a broad picture of growth and development trends. These are things that a lot of us at the commission level mull over on a monthly, if not daily, basis, but we had a number of organizations that maybe, you know, that's not their valley wig. To communicate goals, the process and timeline of the Plan Central Vermont process, to create a clear understanding of partner roles and how they can participate if they want to moving forward, to gather initial input, to inform our vision and goals, and to identify partner organizations that wish to participate moving forward. So the nuts and bolts of that event, and this presentation is going to follow a similar format, except for the last two bullets. So we did that day, had the last hour devoted to breakout sessions, and they were based on five different groups, including transportation, economic development, natural resources, cultural resources in communities, and energy infrastructure and housing. And we asked that participants self-select which group they were either interested in or had substantial knowledge in and participate in that group. Kim is actually going to get into some of the results from those breakout sessions later in this presentation, but we won't be forcing you all to do that this evening. Do you want to mention Stephanie Smith? Do you mind raising your hand? Great. She is our AmeriCorps Vista Rep, and we're really happy to have her on board. She's actually working really closely with Kim and myself for pretty much all of this project, but in particular, community engagement is her primary function. And she should have handed out packet of information to you all earlier, and that is the same packet the participants got at the meeting, so there's nothing different in there. I think the most important thing that we told folks to pay attention to and I'd like for you all to be thinking about throughout this presentation is the very last page, which is the Future Involvement Form, dun, dun, dun. So in order to leave the event, we asked people to turn this in. It was your ticket out of the room. So we did get a lot of responses from that. So be thinking, if you haven't already expressed, you know, how you would like to participate beyond... I know you all are here, and the commission will play a huge role in adopting the plan and reviewing the plan and making changes and corrections to it, but there are other ways for you to participate, so be thinking about that. Next slide, please. Great. So in order to get a sense of where we're going with this project, I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss who we are as a region. So this map depicts our RPC border as is designated by the state. But what does that border really mean? So looking from the top down, which is often what folks think of when they consider land use planning or regional planning, I could tell you that we're made up of two counties, 23 municipalities, and eight school districts. Does that give you a good sense of who we are as a region? I could tell you that we contain diverse transportation infrastructure, including I-89, six highway exits, and 20 moose crossing signs, which I know as I drive home on Route 12 in the evenings. It's very exciting. But we also, in particular, considering much of our rural character, we have some pretty diverse transportation options: park-and-rides, public transit, carpool and van pools that are informal. Does that give you a better sense of who we are as a region? I could tell you that we're comprised of four labor market areas. We are home to the second-largest LMA in Vermont, and that these don't necessarily follow our municipal borders, that we're made up of major employers such as Green Mountain Coffee Roasters, Cabot-Creamery Cooperative, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Central Vermont Medical Center, the list goes on. Does that give you a better sense of who we are as a region? I could tell you that, like much of the great state of Vermont, we're made up of rich natural resources, such as four major watersheds. We are a recreational mecca, home to approximately 23 miles of the long trail, ski industries Sugar Bush and Mad River Glen, and a variety of cross-country ski trails, both formal and informal, some of which rely on the good graces of private landowners giving us access to those lands. The vast trail, numerous mountain bike trails, you get the fixture. Does that give you a good sense of who we are? So perhaps the challenge in attempting to define really who we are as a region is that we are really made up of diverse municipalities, communities, school districts, and most importantly, people. People with diverse backgrounds, experiences, and opinions. Although we live regionally, with many of us living, working, shopping, and recreating across municipal borders, when you ask someone where are they from or where do they live, not too many people say Central Vermont. So cultural identity in reality is much smaller than this region as a whole, which can really present a challenge when we're trying to ask people to think big picture and plan for our entire region and to plan 10 to 30 years from now. So perhaps if we begin to look at our subregions and take a look at who we are really from the ground up, and look at how we identify ourselves, we may get a better picture of who we are as a region and perhaps where we want to be going. So perhaps if we consider what we value, okay, such as our tenacity, our rural character, our small towns and villages, our quality schools, opportunities for employment, or lack of opportunities of employment, we may begin to get a better picture of who we are as a region. Not only does the character of the region obviously shape who we are as individuals, but it really shapes how we live, from where we work, where we send our kids to school, childcare opportunities, infrastructure capacity, opportunities for businesses, the list goes on and on. So does that give you a little bit of a better sense of who we are and perhaps where we want to go? So what if we continue to take a look at these individual values? We asked the participants at the kickoff meeting to fill out a survey ahead of time, asking two questions, one of which was, "Central Vermont is defined by..." Fill in the blank. So this image here is going to show you the diversity of responses. The bigger and bolder of the words, the more often it was chosen. It's just important to remember that throughout this process, we are going to be asking the public, residents of your towns, to identify what they feel defines Central Vermont and what they value about this region. The next question we asked was, "Do you live in Central Vermont? Do you work in Central Vermont?" Because I value its blank. And again, access is a word that keeps coming up, and that was used in a lot of different contexts: access to good schools, access to jobs, access to food, recreation. That came up a lot. I think it's important to really pause and consider these values throughout this process, as it's easy to really get caught up in the numbers and the micro-scale analyses of how many interstate exits we have, what is our median housing value, what is our unemployment rate, all of which are very important, but they're just numbers if we don't also consider the broader picture of the values and the context of why we're looking at these numbers in the first place. And certainly, just looking at the raw numbers don't take into account implementation strategies and what do we do with this plan after it's written. So perhaps we need to look at where we come from. So as land use planners, we consider not only the qualitative data, sort of the values of why you want to be here, why you choose to be here, but we also like to consider the quantitative data of how are we growing, how have we been growing? Are our development trends really reinforcing those values that we've stated? Do they support our rural landscape? Do they support our compact villages surrounded by rural countryside? So these series of maps are going to depict residential homes through the plotting of E-911 data points, just residential development since 1999. The hotter the color, the more dense those areas are, so you can probably very easily identify Montpelier, Berry area, and Waterbury. So looking at them side by side, 1999 and 2013, like much of the state, like much of northern New England, we're not experiencing gangbusters-type growth. We're instead faced with that daunting challenge of an incremental growth pattern, and what do we do with that? Our growth pattern, like many others, follows major transportation corridors and nodes which have historically followed the landscape, so our river valleys, our valley bottoms, the effects of which many of us felt in the spring of 2011 with flooding, and also in August with the effects of Tropical Storm Irene. So you can see some changes throughout much of the region, in particular, Waterbury Center, Bayston, Orange, Washington Town, but nothing is overtly shocking. As planners, we also like to consider, well, how much have we grown? These charts will show the population changes between 1960 and 2010. Again, unlike some parts of the country, we're not experiencing exponential population boom, but we're not shrinking. So that then begs the question, well, how have our lifestyles changed? So we have this small population, you know, consistently increasing... Let me go to the next slide. Thanks. But how are our lifestyles changing, and is that sort of affecting how we're planning? So this is just interesting, you know, it mimics what's going on throughout much of northern New England, and to a good extent throughout much of the country, our household populations are shrinking. So when we think of the amount of housing that we're planning for within the amount of people, how many people are making up that housing? It's just something interesting to think about. And finally, as land use planners, we also like to consider, we should be considering the question, well, who are we planning for? So like the rest of northern New England, we are a gray state. We should be planning for an aging population. Our median age is 43, and that really begs the question, are we effectively planning for this population? Do residents of Central Vermont have the ability to age in place? Are we addressing transportation options, housing, medical care, access to services, social opportunities, all of those things that really feed into people's quality of lives? So these are a bunch of different factors that we are considering as we're looking at our 2016 regional plan. The regional plan is a tool that we have to address these collective regional issues, and it is essentially a tool that can help us and the rest of our towns to guide us where we're going. So for many of you, this is not new, but what does it encompass? This time around, we'll have 12 elements and 14 state-specific goals. That's one more than... Two more than last time: economic development and flood resiliency. The purpose of this plan is really big picture, to guide growth and development throughout our region. And also, I like to consider, well, what does this mean for our towns? What does this mean where the rubber meets the road? And at the regional plan kickoff meeting, we were really fortunate to have three of our participants be victims, or volunteers, really, I should say, to really explain. Here are some examples of how the regional plan has affected us in our towns. We had Gwen Halsmith from the city of Montpelier. We had Josh Schwartz from the Mad River Valley Planning District. And we had Erica Campbell of Vermont Farm to Plate give some specific ways for how they've used the regional plan or specific projects that have been influenced by the regional plan. So implementation is always that sort of funky character, but it is happening. So we've now had a brief refresher on who we maybe are as a region, what tools we have to help us move forward. The question is, well, where are we going and how are we really going to get there? So in your handout packet, this image is there. Feel free to reference it if you want to. It is essentially what the structure of this process can look like. The regional commission, as you all know, just like the previous regional plans, will have the final ultimate authority to decide on the drafts, to review those drafts, and recommend changes, and you all are also, as you know, are in charge of the final adoption process. The regional plan draft committee, which is highlighted here, is sort of acting, sort of think of them as a steering committee. They'll be meeting throughout this process. They're made up of nine stakeholders, five commissioners, four representatives from organizations throughout our region, and they are going to have a big job. They'll be charged with establishing an overall vision of the plan, establishing the guiding principles, and reviewing plan drafts as they come up from staff and working groups. And finally, this body is also charged with establishing an overall implementation strategy by looking at the goals we've established and prioritizing some of those. Then, moving on to the working groups, there'll be seven working groups that are going to address the statutory elements that we are required to address. These groups were going to meet for a limited basis, and they are... Probably can't see them very well on this screen, but in your handout, you should see the general timeline for when these groups will be meeting. They're going to vary depending on the scope of the topic, and the amount of time that they're meeting will vary as well, but they will be made up of regional commissioners as well as representatives from other organizations. as well as representatives from other organizations and staff. And last, but not least, we should probably switch for a little bit. Kim is going to talk a little bit more about the public engagement committee. You got it.
Okay, great.
Thanks. Public participation engagement will be another working group, and we'll talk about kind of the plans for activities and what that committee will lead up right here. As you know, public participation engagement can take many forms, and Lori was, thankfully, could dig up this public hearing notice from our 2008 regional plan, which is of course notifying that a draft has been completed and asking for comments after the fact. I believe our 2008 plan was largely working with committees within the commission with some review by outside stakeholders, but we haven't really done a broad outreach effort since a 1998 Quality of Life Survey that was done roughly 15 years ago. So we knew we wanted to kind of revisit that broader effort to reach out to the community and partners, stakeholders, to, you know, help through the vision and goal setting process and along the way to provide input into the planning process. We know public participation is a challenge, but it is critical in that the problems we're trying to plan and find solutions for are increasingly complex and that planning and projects on the ground are being completed through partnerships between local governments, the private sectors, and nonprofit organizations, using kind of market-based solutions more increasingly, and also sometimes even a little sweat equity from the volunteers that are out there planting trees or attending committee meetings and working for the future of their communities. So we're operating under the concept that the more diverse the group of people attempting to solve the problems and provide the input, that the better the solutions will be ultimately, the larger pool of resources we'll have to pull from as we move into implementation and that the more buy-in we'll have when we reach that phase as well. So we've set some broader public outreach goals, and I'll run through them one by one as well as update you on some projects and plans that are already underway. And it's going to take some time and effort, but we want to figure out how we can meaningfully engage a broad base of people, too soon, a broad base of people with limited time and resources. So our four kind of overarching objectives are to utilize the new tools and technologies that are available to us now that will help us reach, again, a broader base of the population using web-based tools, to use resources efficiently and partner with other organizations where possible to kind of maximize our impact, to set clear expectations for the input we're asking for and exactly how it's going to be used, to not just ask people what they think and then have it not be, you know, directly connected to the process, and also to keep in mind as we move forward and develop tools and resources, how can we make these strategies available and resources to our towns as they do outreach processes for their plan? So goal one is to provide multiple and flexible opportunities for input. A few things we've been working on, we've selected a tool we're going to be working for on a crowdsourced map, which will be a web-based tool where anyone with access to the internet will be able to go drop a pin on a map and create a spatial comment on a variety of topics, and users that visit that page will either be able to add comments themselves or vote whether they agree or disagree. So while we're not talking statistic validity here, we really will be getting a little closer to having people interact and provide their input and, you know, a number of people agree or support that concept. So we've chosen a tool that will also be available on mobile phones, which we thought was pretty important as we move forward with this. Also be, of course, taking advantage of online surveys, the first of which we're hoping to this fall as the regional plan draft committee goes through their vision and goal-setting process. We want to start with a goal prioritization survey, so as folks look through the different elements and the goals available, they can choose which ones are most important to them, and we can use those results to inform our public workshops in the spring. And we're looking to develop meeting in a box tools where we develop a set of resources to guide discussion where folks can become trained facilitators and bring these conversations into their own living room where they gather neighbors or their group of people they meet at the coffee shops with. So we can tap through these informal social networks that already exist to have these conversations going and bring the input back to us. Goal two is to encourage public involvement among our various audiences. We want to achieve geographic diversity in our input. We hope to achieve this by planning three subregional workshops in the spring during the initial phase of the process where we can get input, and also through our online strategies, have people input what town they're responding from. We want to achieve socioeconomic diversity. We're hoping to work with Central Vermont Community Action Council on their community assessment process so we can really get a feel for the unique strengths and pressing needs of our low-income populations and incorporate that into our planning process. And age diversity, we want to, you know, partner specifically with the Council on Aging and senior centers in some of our outreach activities, and also do some service learning projects with area schools. So thus far, Stephanie and I went and presented to a sociology class at Spalding High School that's going to be conducting a student-led community interview project, again focusing on the larger values and kind of storytelling of folks that they choose to interview, and they're specifically planning to choose a diverse group of people from different parts of the region, different age groups, different roles in the community, to ask them what they value about their community, what they see in change, what they like or dislike about those changes, and they'll be both recording that in video and encoding the results to kind of bring back their input. And they're also interviewing each other first so we can get the youth perspective also, which we're excited about. And Stephanie is also leading up a project with Berry Technical Center, Digital Media Arts. They're going to be designing a logo and style guide for the Plan Central Vermont project. So we again went and presented to the class about what we do, what our regional plan project is all about, and we'll be going back to critique their initial logo designs within the next couple of weeks. So we're really excited to have these students involved, both learn more about what we do and the commission is responsible for, and also utilize their excellent work. So goal three is to build important partnerships across diverse interests. We have a few photos from the kickoff luncheon here. Again, work through partnerships to, you know, tap into area expertise through their playing role on committees and also reviewing drafts and providing input for the different elements, and again, to be able to pool resources and work together on public engagement activities. Many of these area organizations that provide regional services have similar public outreach and community engagement goals. And the hope is at the end of this process, that we'll be sustaining partnerships when we move to the implementation phase, that these groups will have been a part of the planning process and have a vested interest in moving forward. So Jackie mentioned the breakout discussions, and though we did actually print out the full results for you, I'm not sure if everyone got a copy, but I'll tell you where they're available on our website. These were some of the three highest priority outcomes from the breakout groups. The top was transportation, to work to enhance public transportation, to allow access to healthcare services, college courses, and entertainment and nightlife. An economic development finding was that we should survey employers for what skills they need and work with schools and workforce trainers to align their education training to those needs. And an outcome from both the natural resources group and also the energy infrastructure and housing group was that we need to strengthen and prioritize our regional flood resilience planning. Goal four, to increase the public's awareness of opportunities and activities, or I'm sorry, opportunities, that's a little redundant, to actively participate in planning, to let folks know where they can get involved from the outset of the planning process, where the, you know, public hearing at the end of the process, and again, have a chance for comment. And on the right here, a home energy workshop, you know, when we move into the implementation phase, how folks can still be involved and again, working towards these goals that we set. Goal five, to maintain meaningful public input, to inform CVRPC's planning and decision-making process, kind of obviously a main goal here, to get that input from the public. And goal six, to inform and educate our stakeholders, share information, and increase overall awareness of regional planning issues and local planning issues in Central Vermont through this process, that people don't always kind of make the connection between issues they notice and land use implications, and how can we kind of raise that awareness and about what planning is and how it works. So we're, we'll be launching a project website and of course utilizing social media tools to get the word out. That will be hosted ultimately at www.plancentralvermont.org, and that should be launched by the end of the year. Of course, we'll all be notified from porch forum, just went statewide, so that certainly will be, a tool we'll be utilizing because, you know, many groups are already on there, so we just can kind of tap into those groups already. We want to make it fun. We're hoping through the public participation and outreach committee that we'll be able to plan some kind of more interactive activities in partnership with arts-based groups or music-based groups to again, just kind of reach new populations that aren't usually involved. We're hoping to maintain a presence at regional events where the opportunity arises, whether at farmers markets, if we can hold a table and do some on-the-ground in-person survey work or interactive map exercises, we hope to take advantage of that going forward. So I mentioned we'll be, we'll be launching a standalone website for the plan, but as of right now, we have everything posted on our current website, all the outcomes from the kickoff meeting, including this presentation and all the notes from the breakout groups. So that is linked to directly from the homepage, but it's also under the regional planning tab entitled Plan Central Vermont 2016 Regional Plans, so feel free to go and check that website out. So Jackie kind of outlined the, the structure of the project, which did have some, some timeframes underneath the individual working groups, and this is all plotted out on a nice, what was blank sheet of paper and converted into a digital version. But this fall, of course, we hosted the kickoff luncheon, we presented to the regional commission as well, we've been in the planning phases for this public participation and outreach. We're hoping to launch the website, the regional plan draft committee will start kickoff the vision and goal-setting process. And early next year, we'll start with the working group meetings and do the individual analysis, data analysis and existing conditions, move into recommendations for goals and policies within each working group, and also plan the public workshops again at the front end of the planning process and launch the crowdsourced mapping tool. Throughout 2015, we'll continue public participation efforts in the working group meetings. 2016 is when the draft plan will go for review, and I believe we'll be submitting the drafts as they come from different elements to the regional commission, so you're not getting the whole plan at once. We'll also plan to host an open house for the public for the draft plan while also going through a goal for, and I'm sorry, implementation step prioritization process with the regional plan draft committee. And towards the end of 2016, finalizing the plan, obviously having the public hearings moving towards adoption with the implementation phase hopefully starting immediately thereafter. So we have the forums, we certainly need some additional sign-ups. The public participation and outreach committee is actually the only committee that did not end up with a commissioner on it, though we do have seven folks from other organizations that were interested in playing a role, so certainly fill it out and hand it back to us so we can start getting that, that meeting together. Thanks Jackie. Thanks. All right, I think Kim said it best. We should have fun. We're not really having fun yet, but that's okay. This is the work that has to be done in order we can, in order for us to get to that part. So who is doing what, what's happening? Over the next three to six months, CVRPC staff will be meeting with planning commissions across the region in order to get input from your towns. We will of course notify the regional commissioner when that actually is scheduled, and we might actually be notifying you ahead of time if we're having a hard time getting on the agenda. We will be launching, as Kim mentioned, website, public engagement meetings, the regional plan draft committee will begin meeting, and as Kim mentioned again, in January is when our working groups will get started. So from phone calls, emails, one-on-one conversations, and responses to the kickoff meeting, we have a number of people sign up for a number of different working groups, both organizations and commissioners. And specifically, we've had four commissioners express preliminary interest in serving on the regional plan draft committee, which as I mentioned, sort of is acting like that steering committee. I'm going to call you out now, and if you've changed your mind, that's fine, just let us know. We have Tim Carver from East Montpelier, Mike Miller from Berry City, Dave Strong from Plainfield, and Laura Hill-Uvings from Northfield, so that leaves one spot open in terms of the five commissioners. The four organizations slash municipal reps that have expressed interest, Sophie Savoy from Winuski Natural Resources Conservation District, Ed Larson, most of us know, Berry Granite Association, Dave Rubin, Central Vermont Community Action Council, and Gwen Halsmith from the city of Montpelier. So at this time, I'd like to open up the floor to any questions or comments that you all might have.
And I'd just like to mention that in order to get this process rolling, I'm hoping that next month's commission meeting, this regional plan draft review committee can formally be appointed. So, so we still have one commissioner slot, so be thinking about that or let us know if you're interested in serving, but I'm hoping to have, as I said, a formal appointment of this committee happen at next month's meeting.
This is a lot of information to digest for those of you who this is the first time, so please.
How many do you have on the economic development?
That's probably our biggest one, we have 16?
No, I mean, you know. Commissioners.
I don't remember off the top of my head, do you?
Do you have more than you need?
Oh, you want headlights. You know what, I actually, unless you recall, I'd have to go back and double check, I apologize. There were a number of commissioners, to my knowledge, though I can't. I can get back to you. Any other comments?
Upside down.
Two times, sorry.
No, the book.
Not the book, it'll fall open.
Hi Jake, it's tough to get used to.
We had Don Lahey indicating interest, Carol, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, that wasn't different, as well as Julie Potter, alternate from East Montpelier, and to my knowledge, those were the only commissioners that indicated they were interested at that meeting, but this is the economic development working group. So if you haven't yet, fill out the form in the back of the packet. Thank you all.
Folks want to take a quick break before we move on to the less diligent process ahead of us? Everybody wants to roll. All right. Okay. So we, we're going to have a motion on the floor. It reads, should CVRPC amend its bylaws and governing structure to consolidate with the Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation as set forth in the joint committee's report on consolidation? Anyone not understand what that means?
You need a motion for that?
We will, yes. And the voting process.
Don?
I'll make the motion.
Yep, Tina?
I just have a question about it.
Okay.
We're voting on that motion, and it says as set forth, we're voting on the proposal as set forth in the joint committee report. I have heard today from, or a couple of days ago, from Ed Larson at the Montpelier City Council meeting, that that would, and we discussed at the executive committee meeting, that that vote to go forward would enable us to work on bylaws and, and a process for having a further vote on amending the bylaws, but it would allow us to amend these bylaws and the shape of the organization under this proposal. Is that correct? Is that?
No, you need 60% vote of the 23 member towns.
Right.
And audit to change the bylaws.
Right, but what we're voting on tonight would be whether to go forward towards proposing amending the bylaws rather than it's, we are not limited to the bylaws as proposed.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That's correct. Okay, so we're going to need a motion for a roll call vote if anyone would.
Motion for the. Let's, let's deal with the motion first, Don.
Okay.
There's a motion on the.
I mean, do you have discussions of whether you have to have a motion, you have to have a second. I make the motion.
I'll second.
To go ahead with the vote on the motion as written, as stated.
Right.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Well, that's.
Wait a minute.
Discussion?
Now you can ask.
Now you can ask for the motion for the roll-call.
Okay. All right. So does anyone care to make a motion to proceed with a roll-call vote?
Myself.
Seconded. Seconded by Mike.
All the roll-call vote will do is simply go and have each municipality will, either, it either goes by, Lori reads off the name and that municipality votes, or we go around and each municipality announces what their vote would be. But either way, we'd have a tally over which ones voted and which ones voted against.
We've got it set up for you to read them off, right, Lori?
I can read.
Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion?
This is the floor. We're in discussion.
Yep.
It's my, I am really sorry that Cabot is not going to vote for this. I'm sorry that I can't vote for, continuing. I feel that any, I feel that any deficiencies in the former setup could be best, could be best. I think we could take care of whatever problems people thought were present by better cooperation between the two organizations. I think that sometimes, I felt for some time that regional planning was perhaps a little precious about development. And I think that we could pay more attention to the economic development, but I don't feel that this is the way to go. I don't feel that the merging of the two is the way to go for a lot of reasons. And I'm very sorry to have this, to have to say this, because the people who worked on this have done a marvelous job, a really, really good job. They've covered a lot of bases. But I figure, but I feel that in the end, it's not the way to go.
Okay. We're really not intending on debating any of what has been done in the past. We're really only working on the motion. So we're going to try and limit the discussion to the motion.
Then there is no discussion on this?
Well, we're good. But it's not on the whole process. It's just on the motion.
My point of view, that was on the motion.
Oh, okay. All right. Anybody else have more on the motion?
Just to reiterate Tina's comment, to verify that, this motion could be interpreted to pigeonhole us into what was prepared by the committee, but it's clear that we do have flexibility to change that should this move forward. What Tina has before, I just want to make sure that shows up in the minutes and all that.
Okay.
I think Sam ought, if it goes down, I think Sam should be appointed as a full member in the way they have done it in the past, but you don't have to bring in a bunch of others because she's proven her worth being here. And also, there's quite a few of us that run businesses. And there's a lot of input from people that run businesses and can see that side of things. So if it goes down, that's the first thing I think we should do. And there was discussion about us trying to come up with something because we need more interaction.
So are you looking at a at-large?
Yes. And we can do, the executive committee can do it. And then, no?
No, that has to be changed.
That requires a bylaw.
Bylaw change.
Yeah.
Same as what we're talking about, the same process that we're talking about now that would have to apply.
Well, I think it would pass.
Bylaw change, any bylaw change, the same process. Okay. Any more discussion on the motion?
I don't understand what we are discussing. I think everybody said how they're going to vote. Why not just do it and be done with it?
That kind of sounds like a suggestion I heard before.
He's calling a question.
Calling the question. Any more discussion about the motion?
Can you read the motion?
I have noticed in the report that the language that says that the new organization will assume all the liabilities and assets of CVEDC. I haven't heard anything in these discussions about what the liabilities and assets of CVEDC are. And I think it's important that we know that. I don't think we're doing due diligence if we don't have that kind of information. The Montpelier City Council also has expressed a need for more information on the two organizations. So, and when I tried to get information, CVRPC immediately emailed or sent emails to me the information that I requested about the current and a few past years, financial information, activity reports, and contracts with the state. And I asked CVEDC for them as well. And I had to go to the office that was not able to copy, make copies of the information that I wanted to present to the Montpelier City Council, who said they wanted more information. And I was not able to take copies out. CVEDC is by its enabling statute, subject to the public records law. I didn't think, when we were talking about our organizations becoming one, that I would need to file a formal written request for the information that I think we need to do due diligence when we're talking about combining the bodies into one organization. So I would suggest that if we do vote to go ahead, that we plan, we assume, and we make sure that we will have an audit of both organizations by a professional who can give us advice as to whether the two organizations are financially able to succeed as one organization, and whether, and we might want to have further professional input as to whether, in any other ways, there would be issues. But I think that we need to have more information. And Montpelier did think so, too.
Yeah. Gunnar, head.
The information Tina refers to was reviewed by the committee at some length. Tina was invited to go to CVEDC's offices to review this information. And I don't need to keep going on that one. That's all.
Okay. Sam?
First, respectfully, we're not enabled by statute. We are private nonprofit organizations, all 12 regional development corporations. There is no enabling statute that created us. We very willingly gave our financials and all information that the committee asked for. And it was reviewed and available to all members of the joint committee, which consisted of five commissioners from the RPC and five members of the board of directors. And we were more than willing to make and did make all of our financials and our contracts and our reports available to Commissioner Ruth when she asked for them at our offices. But we are not enabled by statute. We are private nonprofit 501(c)(6).
Laura?
I agree with Tina. I think whether or not you're enabled by statute, you're still subject to public documents law, which means that anything requested by a member of the public should be available in copies on request. The other thing I'd like to just point out is that, just a point to clarify the process, the motion we're voting on today is differently worded than the motion that was sent out to the towns. And I'd like that noted.
Right. Yeah, we did change it. And the reason for that change was to actually limit it a little more and clarify it. So I know it sounds a little convoluted, the way it's written, but it's the only way we could actually have it come out in a workable fashion without it looking like this is a vote to actually change the bylaw.
Though it was provided with the agenda and materials.
Right. But the town, but I think it's just confusing that a letter was sent out to the towns saying one thing, and it made it seem like we actually were voting on the bylaws that were in the proposal, but now we're not. Or at least, that's what you're telling us.
Yeah, we had recognized that.
So it's kind of, I think it's confusing for the towns, and it just seemed like, you know, it was only weak to digest all this.
Yeah. Dave?
Well, it's true that the motion doesn't rule out the possibility of amending the bylaws. I think that it is fair to say that the motion does say that we accept the broad outline of the plan as proposed, you know, give or take. So it's not just a blank slate we're voting on.
Okay. Anything further? Yeah?
Don, it's just a procedural point. Right now, there's a motion on the floor that was not acted on to go to a roll-call vote.
Right.
And so I guess the first vote has to be whether or not we do a roll-call. If that passes, then we do the roll-call.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess we need, motion for the roll-call was Tina.
It's made and seconded.
And Mike seconded. Any discussion specifically on the roll-call vote? All those in favor? See, I?
I.
Okay. So we're set to proceed.
Any no votes or extensions?
On what?
Any no votes or extensions?
Any no votes.
On the roll-call issue.
On the roll, no, on the.
On the roll-call.
Yes.
On the roll-call vote. So I guess everyone is in favor. Okay, Lori, ball's in your court.
You're going to ask the floor to read out the names of the towns?
So you're ready for the motion? And you'd like me to read it? Is that the, is that the call? Should CVRPC amend its bylaws and governing structure consolidate with the Central Vermont Economic Development Corporation as set forth in the joint committee's report on consolidation? City of Berry?
Yes.
Town of Berry?
Yes.
Berlin?
Yes.
Cabot?
No.
Callis?
No.
Duxbury?
No.
East Montpelier?
No.
Foston?
No.
Marshfield?
No.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Montpelier?
Yes.
Mortown?
Yes.
Northfield?
No.
Orange?
Upstans?
Lanefield?
No.
Wakefield?
No.
Warren?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Waterbury?
Yes.
Williamstown?
Yes.
Woodbury?
Yes.
Worcester?
No.
11 no. 8, 9, 10 yes.
So it looks like the noes carry it?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move on to, let's see, what else have we got?
Item 5. Item 5, Don. Item 5.
And thank you, everyone, for what was a, certainly a challenging discussion for everyone to have. And I thought we all kind of handled things very professionally and very civilly, even though it was going to be something that we knew a lot of people felt passionately about. And I'm glad to see the Regional Planning Commission really kind of took care of itself and handled its business professionally.
Bob?
I think I'd like to reiterate what I've heard others say here. I think there's a need for, or there's an opportunity for improved cooperation between Economic Development Corporation and Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And in light of a no vote on this issue, I would like to suggest, or even perhaps ask for a vote, but I'd like to suggest that we develop some things that we can do to better cooperate as organizations in going in the future. I think those that have voted no would agree, correct if I'm wrong, that that is necessary. We need to have more participation on both levels.
Now, I think that the new regional plan is going to try and accomplish exactly that. It was the largest turnout, I think, group that we had, wasn't it?
Yes.
Economic Development.
Development, yeah.
So I think that reflects, you know, that we really need to look at it and work closer.
Well, certainly the needs of the economic development. Of course, the plan is very evident, and we should be involved in that. But I'm suggesting, it's a two-way street. I think we need to participate as a group with Economic Development Corporation, just as they participate with us at our regular meetings. And so I'm urging that we see that happen. We develop a system to make that happen.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we'll probably lay down some guidelines in the new plan.
I think some opportunities to do that.
Right.
And come on the 22nd. We still need two more people on the 22nd.
Does that mean you just volunteered?
I'm trying very hard not to volunteer. I'm going to volunteer at the moment. After your season, however, we'll discuss this.
Dave?
I think the executive committee could discuss some ways where we could implement that type of cooperation.
I would look forward to the discussion.
Yeah. Perhaps we could invite, excuse me, perhaps we could invite, you know, Peter Hood or someone from Development Corporation to the.
Yeah. He actually put his name in on the Economic Development Committee. Did you put his name down, Lori?
I'm in.
You got, you got Peter Hood? Yeah.
Over the years, I've gotten to meet these folks on economic development. It's a damn good bunch. Very good bunch.
Yeah.
The towns' opinion went beyond, but hopefully it would have happened.
I also hope that, I hope that the participation, which has been quite weak in recent years and seems to have been reinvigorated in the last year as the smaller towns have come out and now participated in this process that has led to this vote today, that I would certainly hope that these same towns will be active participants moving forward and not simply fall by the wayside, as was the actual fact before this proposed merger really came to be discussed. So I look forward to calling people. Look forward to participation.
Where'd you get that?
And on that note, Kim, just to let folks know what's, what we're going to be talking about next month? Yes. We just, I believe, sent out the invite.
Uh, yes, we just, I believe we sent out the invite earlier this week, that we'll be having a presentation on municipal wastewater solutions, and we will have reps from Department of Environmental Conservation, from U.S. Day of Rural Development, promise funding agency, as well as the Agency of Commerce and Community Development to discuss technical assistance and financial options. So we've, we've sent the invite to municipal staff and officials also, should more, more folks be interested in working. They have said, it'll be fun.
Anya?
Great presentation. Kim and I had the opportunity to, to see it last week or the week before, actually, and so it's, if you haven't had the opportunity, they have them walking through step by step what your options are, potential funding mechanisms, barring federal government, ever starting at the beginning, so...
All right, Tina?
And having looked at Sam's, the CVEDC's report to the state, and recalling Sue's reports to us about what had been going on, so one of the things that both bodies have been working on, maybe independently, maybe together, was the expansion of broadband, and I don't know if we're still involved in that, but it seems to me that might be a really good project for the two organizations to cooperate on in some way, if that, if that's within their bailiwick.
That was something CVEDC did. I have mentioned it several times, and I'll offer it yet again. I am always happy to do a brief or longer presentation on what CVEDC and the RDCs of Vermont do in economic development, anytime you want it.
I, for one, would like to hear it.
Yeah, I think we can schedule that, can't we? Yeah, we'll schedule that, if that's okay. Yeah, kind of a side note about that, first two years I was on Central Vermont Regional Planning, at the, we used to have an annual dinner, and the two first ones, my wife Susan and I sat with Sam at the, and I just thought she was automatically part of regional planning. I learned a lot from her, you know, just, just the dinners. I'm kind of, kind of sad that that fell by the wayside, but I guess our budget is a little...
No, just this year, we, we had something else going on.
Yeah, right, yeah, we've had a few, few...
We only, didn't do it this year.
Few things, but, you know, it was just, just an observation of, you know, how perception can be as far as involvement in an organization like this. Bob?
On a different subject, I heard a very interesting presentation last night at the select board meeting, because I had nothing else to do. It represented for the Asian Natural Resources, Nets Wainback came and did a presentation on flood hazard mitigation, flood resiliency, which is one of our criteria. Many of you probably already heard him. I thought it was a very interesting presentation, although I disagree with him on a lot of other issues, but the important thing that I took out of this is this community rating system is an important element. As, as communities start to adopt community rating systems, get involved in developing community rating systems, they can lower the insurance premiums for homeowners in their communities. What's happening nationwide is many, many communities are getting involved, especially the large communities. That means really the national flood insurance program, flood insurance program is going to start getting paid for by those that don't get in community rating systems, don't develop it, and most communities are eligible for some points, it's a 10, you're all a 10 unless you do something about it. It's easy to become a nine or an eight. Has Barry done anything about it? Mike?
No, there are only a couple of...
Montpelier has.
Montpelier has. We're looking at it.
Yeah, I, I would like to suggest, and I know we have a ton of things to do at the Regional Planning Commission, but I think it's an excellent leadership role for the Regional Planning Commission to work with these communities in the region and start developing the steps necessary to reduce premiums for the people who unfortunately are located within the floodplain, don't have a lot of choices. We've had major issues arise, and many of you probably seen in the newspapers, Chris Winters has gone public on the issue. He's gone from zero dollars for his insurance to $8,000 a year he's going to be paying for flood insurance. This is the kind of thing that people are going to be looking at in Barry, Montpelier, Berlin, Waterbury, and all our communities, because we chose that geographic location that worked for us, which was the valley. So I'd like, I'd like the commission to think about that, maybe we have discussion about that at executive committee level. It's excellent, it's something that the communities themselves really are not going to be sticking on.
I think that's a great idea, and on the issue of, of that, in addition, one can get, if you have questions about whether you're in the floodplain or not, you can get a letter of map amendment, which if you get, you get a surveyor to come and tell you whether you are in a flood, in the floodplain or not, and FEMA has actually removed some people, luckily including me, from the floodplain in Montpelier, which is, and it even refunds the flood insurance you paid in a given year if you, if you paid it, and I am no longer required to have flood insurance, praise the Lord. It's very expensive.
Ben touched on a lot of different topics, and that was one of them. I think, I think we should approach that.
Great idea. Can it be great if you could share that with Chris Winters?
With whom?
Because he didn't even get flooded.
Yeah. Well, Chris was there last night also.
Yeah, a higher elevation.
If I understand this correctly, we charge everybody eight grand, and we give them a chance to get it lowered.
Okay, I guess we're...
It'd be great if we kind of, we've got work to do.
Are we going to get out of here early tonight, Bob?
I'm moving, Jared. I got my piece in.
All right, well, well, before we do that, thank you everybody for showing up. I mean, I think this is one of the best turnouts we've had of commissioners, so thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor of, Bob, say aye or vote in the committee?